I don't know any of y'all saying this is the whole personnel handbook that this nine eighteen was changed for.
Or y'all want to defer action until the next meeting, till you've had a chance to scrutinize the ordinance seven sixty?
And I was actually going to mention that same thing. I'm leaning this direction to say yes, let's take it back, but I would like to have an opportunity to kind of write some numbers and have a little.
I was wanting to clarify something. Uh, these gentlemen, reason why they don't have one? None of them work with cities except for my, 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 I had one, but when I was a supervisor, this is the supervisor's copy of the handbook, and that's reason why we got it all up here. I didn't throw nothing away.
Back in eighteen twenty.
No change.
You're the Lone Ranger there.
I've got a stud in Madison.
Well, I would encourage the council to do this once, get it right, and do it once. If I have it.
Well, I think we need to get a copy of what he's got before the next meeting.
I would agree with that.
And I wrote reason back in two twelve, wasn't it? Because it seemed to me like that everything that was done, it's done against the impetus.
Yeah.
You know, and so I'm an employee person, so I've been out there. I know what it's all about. Because once it just took away.
Probably get it back.
Matter of fact, insurance several years were given to, we didn't have to pay our insurance. This year, part of the raise, okay? Next year, they come in, they make us start paying for our raise, I mean, our insurance, and then give us still one and a half percent paid. But last year, they didn't pay our insurance for the bigger raise than one and a half, so we started paying back this bill also.
Yeah. Okay, so what we got now for some getting some dollars, is that potential lawsuit because somebody will bring that up or?
No, to me, it's more potential lawsuit the way it's being construed. The way I read this ordinance from two thousand twelve is no right to buy back, period. Three hundred twenty hours of anything, no right, period. But again, that's not the way it's been construed, but no, there's no liability issue here. For example, I'm employed by the city of East Ridge today, and I understand that there is no believed buyback, but that's not the problem. It's just administrative nightmare if people are treated differently. You go back and calculate, gosh, you came on in two thousand fourteen, you came on in two thousand sixteen, and after it's changed the second time. We just need, or y'all just need to make that consistent.
Although, back in that time, we had some citizens kind of awake about the late buyback. And I think we were looking at it, and, you know, just paying, we're paying all this money, but, you know, they just didn't look, look right or something. You know, that's something I barely understood, just the buyback.
And that's where the study come from.
It's benefit of the city. And that's where the study come from. The purpose brought up.
The point is, it's back on these other cities.
Well, yeah, in fact, I was involved in litigation for the city of Chattanooga, but they had it in, J R reminded me, plot, is that the acronym that they had, where the police officers, they would quote, encourage early retirement, and they got in litigation over that. It was an absolute nightmare, so we're not the Lone Ranger.
This may, this may.
Your line, your line.
Uh, Mr. Jablonski, this may be a hard thing for you to kind of sort out. Is there any way of seeing how this might impact our budget? When we change, uh, and, and I, you know, I, I think it, it needs to be universal, whatever the change is, but, you know, I think at the same time, we all know, you know, how it's going to impact, impact the budget.
And it may, if you have a demographic graphic where you've got a lot of employees that may reach retirement age about the same time, uh, it could be a significant financial issue.
Even if, even if these employees reach the twenty, three hundred twenty hour mark, okay, this year, the only time the city buys us back is on the employee's anniversary day, hire. So employee bill's over three hundred twenty, say he's over eighteen, twenty, thirty hours. He's not even going to get that paid back until it's his anniversary time. He hired him in June, it'll be next June before he gets it.
Is that under seven, seven sixty then? Is that the way it's coming from?
Uh, four nineteen says out here, accumulated maximum, be compensated on the annual basis at third anniversary of the program. For all of ours, accumulated about three twenty. That's like four dash, uh.
Two nineteen.
Two nineteen is written.
I don't know of, of many cities really offhand who do this. I do know in the private sector, there are businesses who do it. I know of some law firms that, that do this. I know of some other private entities that use this because essentially what it does is keeps you from having to either add staff to cover while people are taking their vacation. Uh, or it reduces, reduces overtime expense. And again, but we still have to provide a little overtime. We do. That's why I was asking about our supervisors on the town.
A lot of times when we have most of the, most of the overtime, it wasn't on you. Mike here, for example, they're fighting all for two days in a bar, you know, half say something on the bar, and they kind of cut it out, and they had work coat, all kind of kind of get it cut out. But I think they're getting paid for it because of their discipline. So we, you know, they would be on fire, cut their overtime off. I'm not saying we are, I'm just units of the corporation. So it's like, you know, just like from how the search down by basement down there, and they give, you know, they put paying them, and they got to get overtime, somebody got to pay them.
I, I would like to say something on that. I appreciate your comment, Councilman Mann. Uh, I think a lot of our supervisors have done a fine job, fine job staying on top of their employees, monitoring the overtime, uh, if the employees do get, however, some of the overtime that is billed, we, we can anticipate it. We have natural disasters, we have different things that happen around the city, we have things that happen in our area that's not even in our city that we have to send people to respond to. So some of this time, we cannot anticipate that overtime. It's hard, it's very hard. But I will say with the, the supervisors that we have in place right now, I think they do a great job. I don't see any overtime that is being just, just built just because, you know, Joe and Patty need extra money this week, so we're going to let you work and, and make some, some money to take home with you. I don't see that. I don't see issues like that. If I did, I would, I would address those issues, I promise, as well as I think our supplementary employees.
I don't think, I don't think Larry's comment or my agreement with that were, were aimed at anybody. We have some overtime expense.
You know, any, any speculation with the street work, you ever know what you're going to have?
We've got employees that are out, we've had several out injured through the summer, we've had one out with a major heart attack, we've had one out with an accidental gunshot wound. These are, are things we can not anticipate that happen. When those type of injuries are out for a long period of time, luckily, we've got enough employees that we can kind of float people around and, and work that out. Um, and we've done that. We've got people doing jobs that they've never done before, but they're willing to help out other departments.
I, I think there was still a mistake for our resolution, or that has the city's role to be more critical than we do so with that.
I remember, and I still, I know I've mentioned this before, I'll be brief, but I still remember going to an elected officials academy, the level two thing in Rick Murphysboro, and can't remember what the MTS, uh, police, Rex, Rex Barton, he was, he was leading this particular discussion, and they were talking about the ratios that are kind of standard, and, you know, you don't have to go by them, but it's, you know, just a good rule of thumb, and on the rest, and I told him what the, the city of East Ridge had in terms of population and how many policemen we have, of course, it ended in double digits. I really remember him kind of being surprised, taken aback by what our ratio was because we don't have enough policemen. I mean, even, even if you're just using that as a rule of thumb.
Yeah.
We, we don't have enough.
Well, I mean, personally, I, I can see, uh, over the years, I've been on council for ten, but I, I can see every level to leave, and that's no reflection on, or cheating for any, or anybody, but I, I don't see as many police out or regular others that used to do, uh, they used to have, you know, they used to go out there and do white, so I'm not saying that they did, called out, it was on council, it was on council, uh, you know, they'd be, they'd do a lot of bus longer and stop the cars, and you were pulled up.
Yes, sir.
They'd have, they'd have opposite guys up there, right to the left, right to the right, but you just never see that. It's not, I think we just understand what the police, uh, it ain't a lot of cops, I mean, and there's stuff going on all the time, you know, police, some guy, you have to rid, need to ride, something, you know, there's, it's, it's law, it's, it's changed a lot, not just in our community, but everywhere, it's just, I don't think, it's gotten legal, you know? I think that's something we're going to have to look at in the future, please, and put up a full fire in the light.
Yeah, there are aggravating factors too for, for the city of East Ridge, and some of the things that, that cause crime to go up, or at least contribute to it, are things like proximity to interstate, proximity to state lines, you know, things like that, and we're, you know, we're all of the above, so it, it makes it particularly challenging for places like here to, to stay on top of it and have enough people on staff to, to get the job done.
Yeah, I guess you realize more too, you know, like Dick Cook, his, he had puts out all this about, you know, playing crimes going up, we got the crime watch, or something. So you're more aware of what is going on than you used to. Everybody used to just have scanners, listen at from the house, you know, they're pumping something every day, and it's kind of, you know, a lot of stuff is close to normal, you can get a look at it, you know, just the neighborhood, couple of cars got roped into this, and, and so, I just like, we're going to look at that next year, better all the development that's coming in. But we've got a lot in Florida, and that parkers too, if you're on the lower.
Right now, we, we still have a motion and a second on the, on the floor. It, it sounds like we'd like to take, as, as the city attorney said, let's, let's do it once, make sure it's right, and include everything we want it to include. I think it would be the wisest thing if, if we withdraw the motion in a second, and make sure we get this over the next week or even three weeks, if we want to wait until, uh, next week's meeting, but the one two weeks after, and, and make sure when we do this, whatever it is we do, that it's, it's absolutely what we want, and we're going to live with it for, for good life.
You make sure it's fair for all the employees. I, I wish we got a motion for that to the next meeting, I will be at the next meeting, so.
Okay, next week's meeting?
I'll get to it.
Okay, okay. Well, it's.
Right on the second.
Okay.
Mr. Grant.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Grant brought up the subject about the budget. That, haven't you budgeted so much this year, or didn't I see you budget, uh, buyback leave and salary lines, so you have already budgeted per se what you're expecting the buyback to be for this year, so that is, so that is not going to be no surprise, no expense of the salary budget.
You've got an estimated budget.
Yes, sir. And it fluctuates. Does, I don't know, have our city, you're going to play.
What do you basically want to know? Historic, respect?
Historic, yeah, but also context, and we look for changes, we have newer employees versus higher directors, we know that there won't be any draw, department four, we use somebody who's a long time employee, we know that's going to be cut potentially by that situation.
All right, do we have anything else that we want to talk about here? Certainly, this doesn't going to be the only workshop we can ask, we could do subsequently.
I do, I do, we did raise the insurance for the employees, we need to discuss that. Also, a employee that retires from the city of East Ridge, according to the ordinance, uh, the resolution twenty two fifty nine, he no longer has the benefit of health insurance. Uh, so from the point he retires until the age of sixty five, you'll have to go out and get some type of supplemental insurance, or request, and that also can be looked at by council. We have employees now that are getting that insurance, and I think it's only, only a good option that, uh, well, it's been here for thirty years, this is the least we can do is, is offer him insurance until he's sixty five or above.
If I'm not mistaken, and I may be wrong on this, I thought we had voted that when we dropped up to sixty five, and after that, they had, you know, one way in, some order to call, if I'm not mistaken.
You know, Danny, I can't, I can't remember, because we did, because when, when we closed the window, so to speak, uh, back when, uh, when it was briefly allowed for retirees during that window of time to, to draw lifetime benefits, and we, and we went back and closed that window pretty quickly, how did we do that? How did we, how did we close that? Did we, did we say in that?
It was put in, I mean, it was put in the resolution where we were going to offer, I'll obviously, okay, for two years, but you, y'all put it out, it's kind of, anybody that wanted to retire early, lifetime insurance, y'all had two papers. And then when they come in with the two papers, then the resolution made up, or the ordinance was made up, with the window included in the ordinance. And I think it was a fun fact of that.
If they asked, if they would tell us, we'd talk about that insurance, yet it falls in, that, like, let the city, if you have, maybe if you did early, the early, like, something like sixty, like insurance fifteen years, you know, like they have, the boys had to figure that out, explain, and up there, some of it.
Could we look and see if, if we have any studies?
Maybe.
Look around here somewhere.
I, I, that's probably about around that time.
Fifty five, I mean, even if I'm probably one out of fifty five, you're not typically going to have that many employees that go out at fifty, fifty one. You're looking around fifty four, fifty five, fifty six year old, if, if a guy hires in pretty young, he thinks it's thirty years, typically a guy hires in thirty years, we've got employees here that have been here for well over thirty five years. Melvin's been here thirty five, thirty six years now. Uh, so some you can't run off. If you would, they're really enjoying the place. There must be something good in the city of East Ridge, guys.
Yeah, well, a lot of it's like, I believe, you're, like, that's where you run around that, but not that big of a.
It's just, I, I don't know, how, how do you deal with that part of it?
We hear. I don't know if it's, if it's policing, or you're scared. I don't, I don't know.
I know, but you're a long time, you're still here. I know when I first met you, you, you weighed pretty good, and you just.
Before all this discussion, for the future, uh, I'll have some fire police right there. Like, I'm thinking about retirement, some cities, like retirement, certain amount of time.
State, the, the state has adopted a twenty five year retirement, P C R S, for public safety. Uh, it is up to the municipalities to accept that, do not have to. Of course, if the municipalities do accept that for public safety, we'll call it, that is an option. That's something, if you want to look at that, you can, and recently, they've done that, and they come up with ideas, typically, you've got, you've got doubt, it's, it's method age, you've got twenty five years, uh, he's wore out. You take a father, or you take a policeman that's been out here the weather, uh, a father's been crawling on his knees for twenty five years, he's wore out, his knees were wore out, uh, he's, he's at a point where it, it's not offered some opportunities there, that the cities started looking at having injuries reported, uh, when they, when they get to that age, in their public safety areas. Uh, a police officer, twenty five years typically is up in age some, when he starts running, he's chasing suspect or something like that, as well as heart attacks. Uh, the age for heart attacks seem to have, uh, come down increasingly for fire and, and police for public safety areas. Uh, we're losing firemen and police officers now at fifty two, fifty three year old, uh, because of stress.
Four, five year bridge plan.
It's, it's something I can call a five year bridge plan. The state has adopted it, and I think it's, uh, it's up to the, uh, the municipalities.
You say it's going to cost more than, what?
It will, it will cost more money because you're having employees retire early.
Okay, what's the difference in that, and what you're talking about, what's your, your third years, like, retired people five?
Five years. You look at, you look at the, uh, the difference in pay for time, there's a different level there, I'm not really familiar with it, the way it's broke down, from your twenty five and your thirty year. Uh, now, if a man went out at twenty five years, you could finalize so much percentage. Uh, with that plan, if you went out at twenty five years, and you met an age, I believe, of fifty five, I believe it is, it'll definitely be equal to about thirty years. I got a thing on this insurance. I'd like to see, we have rescinded resolution number twenty two fifty nine, and also rescind resolution number ten twenty three, and have resolution ten twenty three made into an ordinance order.
I will get.
Yes, sir.
Just we're talking about insurance, changing heads, slipping off.
I don't have resolution ten twenty three in front of me. I know it's referenced in caption to twenty two fifty nine, but.
Ten twenty three was in the caption, uh, we did not, I do not have any copy, I'm council with that. What we do provide was the twenty two fifty nine, we're talking about insurance, which was one of the questions that was on the agenda, as well as the ordinance filing. Resolution ten twenty three allows insurance to be carried over the age of sixty five.
That's like, that's what we vote on, for sixty five.
If, if we can, and we talked about the possibility of there being some study from mid past or something, we can just look for that and see if, if we, we have something. I guess we can probably reach out to him, ask, hey, in your files somewhere, is there, did you do a study in regard to this? Uh, so I think that would serve a couple of different purposes, it would, uh, meet what, uh, what you guys are, are talking about, and, and give us some idea, if a study has been done, give us some idea what, what it might cost us. All right, we've covered a lot of ground. Do we have anything else?
In my packet here, it has ordinance number eight seventy nine, where it talks about, and in my packet, highlighted dismissal. I was just, what's in there for? We hadn't talked about it yet.
I'm sorry, I have a question.
In the packet here, ordinance eight seventy nine is in the packet, and, and my copy, dismissal is highlighted.
All right, there's a couple of things that was highlighted, and the reason being, uh, ordinance eight seventy nine, uh, the part where it says four dash two four 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 is dismissal. In this new employee handbook, if you read below the word dismissal, it was changed in, in ordinance eight seventy nine, to where we're no longer at wheel employees in city of East Ridge. And this draft that Mr. Hyde had put together, which was one of the misunderstandings that brought his attention, was we, uh, we as employees have to be fired or demoted for cause, we are no longer at wheel, and that was passed, uh, in the ordinance of eight seventy nine. That was one of the issues in this, this new draft, it'll have to be changed. The draft says at wheel.
Where's it at in the, in the new draft?
It's on the front page, under ordinance eight seventy nine, just below, uh, where it says four dash two four four, it's got a four beside that.
No, are you talking in the handbook?
In the handbook, it's going to be the second?
Uh, thirty, I think it's page thirty three.
It's going to be page three, and it says at wheel employees.
Page what?
Says employees of the city is on an at wheel basis, that's incorrect. According to that ordinance, eight seventy nine, we are not at wheel employees.
That's.
It's, it would appear that these two are.
Well, the state of Tennessee is an at wheel state.
They are an at wheel state, the city of East Ridge passed an ordinance of eight seventy nine, where that's saying you don't be dismissed for cause, will be demoted for cause. Took away the at wheel for the city of East Ridge in two thousand ten.
How can we go against the state, something to date, and it's a good program.
Well, it's not, we can do anything we want to, and the state of Tennessee, employees are at wheel employees, and state law of Tennessee allows, uh, both public and private employees to be at wheel.
Water and both cities.
And my understanding is that.
That's why I'm saying I don't.
Of course, I would have asked two thousand ten, and I don't know what, what, and it was definitely changed. But I'm going to have to research, this is, I don't understand what we're getting at, but I'm going to have to research and see, when you hire an employee at, and you have to, say they were hired yesterday or last month and went over, and you hired them, and they understood that they only be dismissed for cause, can you go back to the future and rescind that, what y'all are talking about, and then all of a sudden, just make them an at wheel employee, and, and the city needs you to terminate them for any reason whatsoever? There may be some legal issues in doing that. But the flip side of that is, I can't imagine that, that once you're locked in to, like being, have to be fired for cause, you have to come out and.
If I was just asking a question, it was in the packet, and it was highlighted, so.
I'll, I'll get the packet, I'll take it away, one sec. Let us know.
I asked, uh, how many vehicles, I mean, take on?
Um, we're getting to that, yes, sir. By, by understanding, we have, administration has one, building maintenance, one, fire department three codes, one, parking racks, one, arena, one, community center, one, uh, public, I'm sorry, police thirty nine, animal control, one, sanitation, one, streets, one. So total of fifty one vehicles.
And I believe when we, uh, I was on council at that time, but I believe when they did that, that part of their raise, where I got part of the raise back in, when they first started, in fact, the. Am I right on that?
If you do that, you have to.
Well, that, you're, you're right there, Mr. Diddy, but also right here on the four nation, two thirty seven, use of city vehicles and equipment, out of age, all city employees who are sighted city vehicle, then use the vehicle for travel to and from work, shall see the statement, annually indicating the amount of benefit for tax purposes, driver who are using vehicles such a beneficial return based on round trip mileage from the place of residence, place of business, times, and current allowances for mileage. And I noticed in here that everybody would be giving. Then I noticed in here that everybody would be given an annual statement. I believe there was also something passed, researching, and we have been. But where public safety did not follow up with that as far as having a report or with financial benefit of such, because they were coming back, back and forth so much.
Yeah, you've got this more, three, better fish, but you've got fire police as dogs.
I believe that's correct. Jim, you remember that, I believe that's...
Well, these others should be different stuff, God.
And I think that's pretty typical across the state. I think that's what they look at across the state. Typically, if the public safety become fire police. And I'll break it down, I'll use examples. Fire department's got three take-home vehicles. That's me, my deputy chief, and my fire marshal. And I will guarantee you, I can factor any of that. I spent a lot of hours here as well as these other guys, but we come back and every fire will make a disaster. A fire room that we're having trouble with, I've got a fire marshal there. We've got a gathering group, a group of folks here in East Ridge that are out of ordinance. My fire marshal's there. Police, we've got our SWAT, we've got our CID, we've got our special services. And that, other than animal services, animal services come by through Kyle every night and the weekend. So if you're looking at vehicle, animal services, you're looking at police cars.
I don't have a problem with public safety having vehicles taken home.
I don't have a problem with any of that.
As far as, yeah, I'll break, I'll keep going, I'll break this down another way. We look at administration, we look at building maintenance, we look at parks and rec. Administration, you look at supervisors and street parks, sanitation. Anytime we have a storm come through, they drive up here, three o'clock in the morning, you know, back up, go to work. We have snowbends, we have different disasters, these guys come out.
Well, Chief Williams, it sounds like, it sounds like you're taking offense.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, these are what I'm saying. I'm looking at numbers and I'm just telling you the reason that I feel in my heart that this is justified for the guys I take on board. These guys are coming back to work.
And it seems like you're taking, like I said, it seems like you're taking offense by it. I don't know.
I don't know at all.
But...
I brought it up because I was real here and white and white.
And, you know, something else that has been asked of me is what about city employees that do not live in East Ridge? Mr. Attorney? What is the city's liability if, number one, they live outside the city limits of the City of East Ridge? In Ottawa, where we're called, down in there, where? But is there any other liabilities if they do not even live in the state of Tennessee? What's the issue with going over state lines? Now, these are questions that citizens have asked me, so I'm simply conveying those questions.
It seemed to me like in the last year or so, TM, there was an issue that rose the subject to TML and TML expressed a reservation about insurability across the state lines of East Ridge. Take it to Georgia, somebody lives in Georgia or something like that. We go back and...
Can we go back and ask that? Because, you know, to me, you know, it's a liability issue for the city. TMLs are insurers, so I definitely want to be sure. There's not a shot there.
One thing I got with this issue about, I have no problem with taking a car where they might pack it forward. Because I look at it this way. Say they had a guy all the way back up here and get their vehicle. You've got somebody on the other side of town that's dying. Would use the fire department, for example. I ain't taking on anybody, so, small. But anyhow, all right, say the fire department has to come all the way back up here and get their fire engine and get their all the safety stuff. Then they get time to get back over, that person dies. Then to me, blood's on our hands because they'd come all the way back to and get the fire and do a thing. This way, they got their vehicle right there where they're at. They get it, go straight to the sink, save a person's life, and then come and prove the double back.
I don't, I don't have a problem with public safety taking vehicles home. I don't have a problem with if a police officer, you know, I don't really care if he doesn't live in the city of East Ridge or not. To me, I just want to be sure that we don't get cross-legged with our insurance. That's the main issue.
It comes back that the insurance says, I mean, I think we compensate. They have to come back and compensate.
You mean if they drive their private vehicle, yeah, we can't...
I'll say something like that. I mean, I've had also had a couple, you know, mentioned because of how many times they actually would have come back and then they'd make about forty-five miles a day to the front. You know, total mileage, that's where a terrible city vehicle takes very, very much of that property. So I believe if, I think if they get called in and if they, the vehicle didn't take away and called the insurance deal, if they get called in, they could pay them. Well, all that.
Well, it's my understanding that either the city or county, the city of Genover County wanted to, that that's how they, that's how they do it.
I love myself. It's about a long time, I think, when Jackie Don't bump off about no other places than our city or things. They go down and some of our maintenance crew that drive in, come from home and go, you remember when the transformer and things go down there? Because I do, one, two, three o'clock in the morning. If you had had your stuff with you, you bring it back straight to us and they drive all the way back there down and get a thing together. When you got a thing all together, then keep it together right now. I look at it this way, if that program working, leave it alone. I thought I had it there.
It's not, it's not about if the program is working or not. It's about is there any liability to the city? That's what it's about.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I thought the, the also liability somebody's not picking.
Well, we have a lot of homework to do. We have studies to find and questions to ask of TML and MTAAS and for each of us who will be voting on it.
We have numbers of questions.
Great, you're playing for the next meeting.
Is a week enough time or do we want to kind of revisit this subject in three weeks? Which will be our second regular meeting in September, I think. Danny said he was not gonna be here next week.
Yeah.
Three weeks gives us an opportunity to get some of these answers. Gives us a little more time to really think over what changes. What I mean, it lasts half a long, it's definitely, if I'm correct.
May I say something about insurance?
Yes, sir.
Back when this thing here was written, this is Hyde, and I just read it out. Tax thing also up here above it, where Hyde says employees must furnish proof of insurance. Several little scripts were normally near and read. Employees must provide proof of insurance, endorsement, use of non-vehicle. Okay? When that was put in there, several of them was the tip boy here, when our insurance companies. And I'm insured at State Department, if you're not out of their mouth, they said that whether, they couldn't actually write the insurance on the city's vehicle by their insurance, because the cities already got it covered. No car, big oven covered. So... I think MTAAS come back and say for employees to purchase their own insurance or take on the insurance. And that's what I would have had, no vehicle for the government to cover or not be insured. City responsible anyway.
We went through this about two years ago, Mr. Hyde, first came here. Same thing came up. We went to this, we went to their insurance companies and said, Hyde, would you put insurance on twenty different cars? Not just me, other people that take on cars. Listen to my, what they call it, the insurance, while we have that waiting on, because we have an accident. Now, we're gonna fight over who's gonna pay for it. My home, homeowner, my insurance, I've got it on the city's insurance.
So the city, is there a cover?
So there were no, there were no insurance.
So it's made more...
Yeah, it'll be October.
I don't know, not really have two insurance companies fighting over coverage than an issue with one company that I have. And I know I go out to the airport and I get a rental car and if I get their insurance as well, then my own personal coverage is supported to that, but it's still, the coverage extended on that vehicle. I can fight it out until the cows come home, so it's being... Go back and...
Revisit that issue and look at it.
Mr. Merritt, what dates are you talking about?
September twenty-fourth. That's the date of the second regular meeting of September.
Well, we have a lot of stuff with, should we do this, like certain things?
We can, we can look at that if it looks like, you know, coming down the line, we've got to have a really big agenda that week, then maybe we can do a call meeting to handle this, this particular issue, but let's kind of wait and see how things break. See if it looks like that's gonna be a really packed agenda.
Do we have more regularly, you got five or six for the rest of the year?
We have two September, two October, typically one November, one December, six, yeah.
All right.
Well, again, a lot of, a lot of information to go over, still a lot of information to try to get. We will...
It will not, it's clearly clear, y'all will be, set this up. We'll have to leave.
Well, we'll just, we'll just kind of shoot for September, September fourth and see how that works. All right, if there's nothing else, we adjourn this meeting. Thanks everyone.